I pledge allegiance to the love of our country, its great and its great service to America. And to the equality of life, for which it stands, one patient, another ally, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. That was awesome. Now, before you guys end up sitting down at the health precinct, no, everybody else can sit down as much as they want. Sorry, I'll be careful what I'm talking to. The kids have a presentation coming on. It's a little loud, but... Okay, well, I'm just gonna start off by just welcoming to the board everybody else to Pioneer School tonight. And we're very excited to have some of our students. Just kinda talk to you guys a little bit about Pioneer School today. Do we know who's going first?
You are going first.
No. Wait, can we start later? Well, let's start with the second graders, and then you other guys can just jump in. And remember, introduce yourself to the board, please. Okay, so second graders, if you wanna go first.
Hi, my name is Cruz Cardenas. I'm in second grade, and my teacher is Ms. Blue.
Hi, my name is Sophie McCollum. I'm a second grader in Ms. Blue's class.
My favorite thing to do is math, because we're seeing what we do on dates, what time it is.
My favorite part of school is how our teachers have us do elephants.
I am favorite Edward Hyde, I'm in third grade, and my teacher's Ms. Miller.
My name is Corbin Dickerson, and I'm in third grade, and my teacher's Ms. Miller.
My name is Sawyer, and my teacher is Mrs. Edwards. And my favorite subject is library, because you're gonna pick out books and read them.
My name is Cruz Cardenas. What I like about... It's you're gonna go down to the library.
Thank you very much. Now, Mrs. Cardenas is gonna play the music. And we're gonna lead the board, excuse me, in our school song. So if you guys would like to join in, the words are right here on the wall. And it's "To the Mickey Mouse Club" tune, right? Okay? So... Thank you, guys. Hey, and you guys are more than welcome to stay for the whole board meeting. But if your parents would like to take you right now, you're welcome to do that, too. Thanks again, you guys. Fantastic. And I don't know, you know, what, maybe the administrators are gonna sing to us later. I don't know, they're gonna follow up with... We're gonna jump right into our agenda now, and start with the superintendent report.
All right, well, I've seen people in the crowd. My name's Dave Kirby. I'm here as an interim superintendent. I've been here. Just kinda getting reacquainted with people around town. I was here, if you don't know, as a graduate high school weaser. And I went away for quite a while, came back, was part of school principal for 20 years. And then went to Wyoming as a superintendent for seven, and then retired, and then got the opportunity to come back with this fine folks school. So, I'm happy to be here. It's been fun to go around this week to meet teachers and students, staff around the school. So, it's been a good weekend after since I've been here. So, I think tonight, as I understand it, Dave will do a presentation, oral presentation. The other principals are not, is that correct? They just gave a written report, and others just did a written report. But I wanna just say, when I got to go to East City Villains, any day Jeff has a bunch of model engines that he's putting together. That's pretty fun. It's just he's really engaged, and they're hands-on, and that group of kids, they're gonna get involved in learning, and that's pretty good to see. I don't have a report on everybody, but I got to part school, and I'm with Steve, and I got his principal there for 20 years. I got to help with snow, the first snow day, and I got to walk out, help direct traffic, and kids were sweating out the hill. I can't believe he paid this guy out, but it's fun. He's there doing that, having a good time. And it's the Pioneer in high school as well, and saw some really good things happen. I got to go around the high school and talk to a bunch of teachers and several students who went through part of school, of course, when I was there. And other teachers in high school as well, middle school, so that was an interesting time. So, that's fun. So, I just kinda tried to keep the same schedule that the previous superintendent had. And so I have maintenance people in the mornings, up in the mornings, kinda get an overview of what's gonna happen around the school. Of course, with all the rain and melting, we had some leaks, and Eric's been on that, appreciated them. Really appreciated them, the snow removal might be the state. They were up in the middle of the night, and so a couple different times, getting ready for games, and they're certainly to be here. They're coming in at midnight, two in the morning, between the maintenance crew and the super... Yeah, Marshall, we forgot. Anyway, that's been really good. I did all of you receive a weekly update from maintenance. Just saw that. So typically, I guess, what I'd like to do in this should be in different directions. I will plan to do that each week. And then, end of the month, my report is just gonna be kind of probably some highlights off and out, as well as a few highlights. But I'm gonna try to keep the reports kinda organized on those things. We did, we have, we have a bus, I got to know whatever the bus farm last week, like the first day, it caught us today. You know, we'll go to the bus farm, meet the bus drivers, because they're obviously essential to this history, but they do bring a piece to school. And it just felt like they had a concern about not having a bus mechanic. I got that message loud and clear. Talked to some state department folks, Colonel, Dr. Barr, kinda worked it out. Found out that we can get for that position, 85% of the person. So, you know, you might see the salary a little high, but apparently it was open for quite a while. With an amount of mine, we didn't have any options. So, that price is probably a little higher than where it's been, or hoping to fill that position. Bus drivers, there's a lot of needs out there, and I'm trying to define what's up. Really hopeful, higher bus mechanic in the very future. I think that's probably enough for the day. Any questions?
Just so everybody knows, we're sitting here tapping our computers, because we're, usually we have Simly, a program that we can follow along the agenda and take... We don't see it, and Simly's not working right now, so we're, like any kid, where you can't just tap the button once. Because I can hear, we're all doing the exact same thing. One of these times, it might come up halfway through, so we're gonna go by paper and shit, and so hopefully we get it right. Mr. Davies? Am I going first? You're on. Okay. Well, again, just welcome to Pioneer School. And I would just encourage you guys, before you leave, if you want to, walk up and down the halls a little bit. There's some artwork out there that I think you guys would really appreciate. And as you're going out the building tonight, everybody, there's a little bulletin board there, and it's the old little sweethearts you get, you know, for Valentine's Day, the little boxes of hearts. Well, what it is, it's what we love about Pioneer School. And those are all thoughts from the kids. And as the hearts come in, we're just gonna continue to add it to the board down there. Stacy and Shawna in the office have been working on that. And it's worth it to pause and read some of those thoughts. They're pretty amazing, and it's a lot of fun. But I know, like I said, the teachers did some work with their kids, and they have some artwork and different work out in the hallway. So, maybe at the end of the meeting, if you guys wanna wander up and down the hallways, you guys will be able to check out some pretty good student work. I think that's all I have, unless you have any questions on my report that I turned in.
Well, I can't tell you, you're not, because my notes are... Oh, I know what your emails are.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
You're on.
Yeah, I saw mine. So, I think that's a good way to do it, when we get back where we're at next month, looking to get from everybody. Unless somebody has something that they would like to share with us. I'll open that up. If you have something you'd like to share that's going great.
I'll share something. So, just at the high school today, on my written report, you saw that Katie Maloney was taking some kids to the club test, the Spanish club test over at CWI. We did take 14 students over there. We had a few, they were able to earn 12 credits, Spanish credits, and we had a couple of kids that did just that. But most of our kids were around that eight to 10 range, so it was pretty exciting for all 14 kids. Just wanted to update.
I gotta say, one thing, or it's, give words to the wrestling tournament on Saturday. Really, pretty nice turnout, a lot of people, but of course, there's over 100 and some kids have canceled out because of closing, what she really called them. And so these guys had to receive that whole tournament and just go with the path. It was nice, Weezer was able to push that, and just go right through it, didn't miss a beat, but it would've been a lot bigger tournament than this. Typically, if your school's shut down, it also will be a few, it's generally, except for BK initially.
It might've been harder to clean the gym up for the basketball game coming up, if everybody was there.
Yeah, that was, that's something to just mention, is that Coach Gibson and his wrestling team and staff did a phenomenal job. Most people don't realize this, but they had their entire wrestling tournament set up, had to tear it down when it was completed, to get ready for the basketball game. And then they had to set the gym back up, because they had a wrestling tournament yesterday, where we had about 700 students participate in a wrestling tournament at our high school, which is a big fundraiser for our wrestling programs. And they just, they just did a really nice job. Mr. Davies is actually our admin at the Weezer Wrestling Tournament for 33 years in a row. He runs our computer and all of our, you know, matches and everything, sets up the whole bracket. So, thank you to Dave, and they did a nice job.
I was in that gym, I'm not sure how many, how many of you could have fit right, because we're fans of our school, so that was fantastic. Great. Really good. Did we have any comments, citizen comments during the meeting? Okay? The WA have...
Oh, yeah. Sorry, I didn't hear. Copy, I'm just wondering. That's how my days go. This is just notes. So, we had a meeting January 29. We have someone going to delegates assembly, which is exciting. That's where the IEA, like, makes their direction for the year, so it's really cool that Weezer has some representation there. We are gonna be gathering once a month, and we were gathering once a quarter. But I, yeah, we're just gonna do once a month now. We are working on our negotiations team. So far, we have Sherry Marvin. Unfortunately, this year, I won't be able to participate in negotiations. I'll be busy. And some glows and grosses are really exciting. So, a huge thank you to the board for moving quickly to secure our interim superintendent. I know that the process can take some time, and we really appreciate your guys' dedication and getting stuff done. And thank you, Mr. Kirby, for stepping in for our district. A big thank you to Shelley Graham for stepping into the English position. The transition has seemed to be smooth, and she's doing great work. Same with our duo third grade teachers. They haven't missed a beat, and the kids have adjusted wonderfully. And, yeah, like, my kids just barely today asked me, "Hey, when's Mrs. McConnell coming back?" I was like, "Well..." But, so, it's been great. We are excited about all the new radios that have been in the district, that schools have gotten. And the high school PSAT scores, everyone's still celebrating that. And thank you for, Drew, for sharing that last meeting. And then, this is probably my last board meeting this year. Maybe I'll come back in May for that last one. But I'm gonna be gone March 18th till May. So, five more weeks, and not count. Thank you, guys.
Congratulations and thank you.
Yeah, it's exciting.
Yeah.
All right. Before we move on, I have to apologize, Mr. Kirby. I just moved on like nothing else was different. So, thank you for being here, everybody, Dave Kirby. I just moved on like nothing had changed, and I missed that opportunity to introduce you. Thanks for giving us your background, anyway, appreciate it. All right, moving on to our consent agenda. Has everybody looked at the prior minutes of our meeting? And is there any changes that you could think of or remember? Okay? And then, our current agenda, under action items G, we're gonna move G up to in-between C and D. G is an executive session, so move that up between C and D. Any other changes that we can make up? We do have one letter, well, one resignation letter that we would like to read, just the one. Shelby, you're up. Ms. Price?
Dear Mr. Kirby and the board of trustees, It is with many mixed emotions that I am providing you with my formal letter of resignation with my position as the special ed director in the Weezer School District. Please accept my resignation effective May 30th to 2029. This decision did not come easily, as the past nine years have been some of the most rewarding of my teaching career. I am incredibly grateful for the opportunities I have had to serve in a variety of roles in the district. Park School Principal, Federal Programs Director, and Special Education Director. Each of these positions have allowed me to grow both personally and professionally, and I will always cherish the relationships I have built with students, staff, families, and the greater Weezer community. The collaboration, dedication, and passion of those I have worked with will stay with me for a lifetime. Thank you for the unwavering support and trust you have given me throughout my time in the district. I appreciate the leadership, mentorship, and camaraderie that have made my tenure so meaningful. In June, my family and I will transition into our next chapter along the Oregon coastline in Coos Bay. As we start this journey, I will carry with me valuable experiences and memories I have with Weezer. I have been blessed beyond measure to have worked with so many in the district that are all, that are committed to ensuring all students have endless opportunities. I am committed to meeting all of my contractual obligations, as well as an effective and swift transition for the new Weezer School District's Vice Director. I will be working with our district office and special education staff to ensure that we close this year and have preparations in place for a wonderful start for the next year. With sincere appreciation and warmest regards, Angela Happersen.
Resignation letters are never fun. Congratulations on being able to move on to Coos Bay.
Yeah.
Financial report.
Okay, you have the reporting you're packing that you can't see. So, I'll just talk about some of my links. Really, there's not much on here that's changed. We're still tracking right along. February 15 will be our next big payment from the state. It'll represent 10% of our annual contribution, and it's our first, what they call the true up picture. So, this is the one that's based on this school year's actual data. Everything that we've received to this point in time is an estimate based on last year. So, this year's authorized budget and funding model from the state, but based on last year's attendance records. So, February 15, so this Friday, February 14, we'll get that first payment that says, "This is what you're gonna get this year." And it's estimated to be about 10%. So, at this point in time, we'll have received 90% of the funding that we'll get for the entire school year. So, that will be happening this week. And I do, you know, we talked a couple months ago about our initial support units being down. The state had not, until that first period comes out, they can't even estimate what our protection will be. We will be under protection because of the significant loss we had in funding units. So, we will be pretty much right online with where we budgeted. We'll not get any more from our protection, but we won't, we shouldn't be down from where we were revenue-wise. So, we'll have more confirmation on that on Friday, when the actual reports come out. But as I'm estimating through everything, it looks like we will be secure on the revenue side of what we had originally budgeted. So, that was really good news to find out. And as you go down, we should be at 40 to 42% of the total budget that we spent in most of our categories, because most of our expenses start with the school year in September, and then go through August. Because our largest expenses, of course, are salaries and benefits. And those contracts for our teachers and the projected payments for all of our classified staff are September through August. So, we're at 42%, because we're at a five-month period right now. And most of our categories are right through, are in line with that. I'm not concerned about anything other than, sorry, special education. Special education on the general fund side, we've only spent 24%, but we're at 59% on the federal side. So, we're gonna have to move some of those expenses over into the general side. So, just because it's at a 23% right now doesn't mean that we're spending less than what was budgeted. It just means that we're spending those federal dollars first. And in light of what's happening with the various freezes and court orders and unfreezes and Supreme rulings on what's happening with all of our federal money, I'm requesting all of our federal money as quickly as I possibly can, so that we can get paid for it. There was some concern earlier this month that food services would not receive their reimbursement claim because of the government freeze. We did receive our funds for January's reimbursement on Friday, because Rachel did a phenomenal job of getting that claim put in on the very first day of the month, so that we're trying to slide through those, you know, freezes and unfreezes and all of those kinds of things, so that we make sure that we get our money. So, no concerns on the general fund side of the House, and really no concerns on our federal side either. We're tracking right along, as I expect us to be. I do have a concern on food services, and it's nothing that Rachel can control right now. She's doing a phenomenal job of controlling expenses to the best of her ability. She's reduced staff where she could. She has changed our orders where she could, so that we're ordering lesser expensive materials and, you know, food and the quantities that we're actually gonna use, so we're not wasting any food. But the problem is the federal reimbursement is not keeping up with the cost of food. She just paid $25 for two dozen eggs. It's absolutely crazy. I mean, yes, she can go to Ridley's and get them for $9 a dozen, but we do have to purchase on the federal scales of everything. And so, she's paying $25, so $12.50 a dozen for eggs. And our federal reimbursement is $4.45 for lunch, and it's easily costing us $5.70 to serve lunch. So, we are seeing that deficit, and that's just gonna continue to grow. I have talked with the state about it, to see if they see anything on the horizon for the federal government to increase our reimbursement rate, and they do not. So, it's something that we're gonna have to look at when we start our budgeting process in the next couple of months, that the general fund is going to have to support our food services program going forward. Right now, we're taking about $10,000 out of their savings account each month, in order to meet their payroll and their food costs. They have $70,000 left in that savings account. So, we will get through this year, but then we'll need to look at next year. Rachel is also taking a very hard look at the past due debt that we have. We have a little over $40,000 in food service bills that parents have not paid. $16,000 of that is for parents who have finally filled out their applications for direct certification, and so that their students can, their children can eat for free. The problem that we have when that happens is any bill that has been generated up until the point in time that they fill out that application is still due from parent, but we can't do anything to collect it. And there's a lot of confusion that once somebody thinks they're free, they think it backdates, but it doesn't. So, we send a very nice letter saying, you know, "Hey, if you can, please send us some money." But we've been doing that now for a couple of years on a few of these accounts. So, Rachel and Beth are getting together a list for me, and the district will have to write a check for that $16,000 and reimburse the food services program. So, that will be coming in the very near future. And we're also beefing up the nasty grab that goes out. It's a very pleasant letter right now about, you know, your past due on your account, please catch it up, and all of that kind of stuff. But, you know, in a policy that we put together, the board wants our kids to eat. It's not their fault that there's not money on their account in most situations. And so, we sent out a very nice letter. We're gonna beef the second letter that goes up to be a little bit more strict, and say, "No, you don't get an extra jug of milk if you don't have money on your account." And "No, you can't buy the chips, and you can't do the a la carte, because there's not any money in your account." And we'll let the parents know that their kids are not gonna get the extra things that they want, because they do have to pay for those things. So, just to kinda make you all aware, we are going to beef that letter up just a little bit, because these are parents that can afford to pay for their lunch according to what that direct certification application says. So, they're meeting the minimum income to, in order to be able to pay for their students' lunch. So, the district can't support that $40,000 deficit, and so we're beefing that up to... And so, you might get a phone call that they got a nasty grab. It won't be really nasty, I promise, because it'll be coming from Rachel. So, but it will tell them that they have to, you know, you know, they do need to pay for that. And Idaho Code says we can't hold their diplomas if we owe the district money. So, they, if they have kids in high school, maybe very well be holding some diplomas until, you know, those bills are paid. So, that'll be coming on the board front. So, those are my two areas of concern, special education. We've talked about, there's not a lot that we can do about it. Those services are mandated by federal law to be provided to those students, and we have to find the money in order to make that happen. And then food services, and again, not a lot we can do on that right now, with eggs at $12.50 a dozen. We're doing all that we can to keep the finances going. But there are some things that we just don't have any control over right now, that we're just gonna have to plan for. On our school modernization money, they're getting ready to do the distribution for the last 20%. We got 80% of our 5.8 million, so we have $4.9 million that we've been investing since the day that we got it. And that, we earned in December $18,871 on that amount. The interest rate at that point in time was 4.86% on the LGIP fund. In January, we earned $18,971, so $100 more, but the interest rate did fall just a little bit to 4.71%. And in February, we only earned $18,300, because the interest rate has fallen to 4.53%. That's a trend that I expect to see continue. I really think before the end of the year, if we're over 3% on that interest, I'll be surprised, because the Federal Reserve is trying to reduce what they're... surprised because the Federal Reserve is trying to reduce what they're, what they're paying out in interest so that they can reduce what people are paying in interest. So mortgage rates can go down and car loans can go down, but that means what we earn also goes down. So the longer that we can keep that money invested and not spend it, the more we will get that can be reserved for maintenance items in the district. But we will need to spend some of that this summer, but just giving you a fair warning that we're not going to continue to receive that $18,000 a month, especially as we start to spend it. But I do expect those interest rates to be declining as well. So, and that is a lot of words for me to say. Is there, are there any questions for me?
They were, they were great words.
Yeah.
In the bills, when you see, we talked about, okay, that it's a sweet, our consent agenda.
I'll make a motion if you approve the consent agenda.
Okay, motion to, consent agenda made, made in second, dollars in favor. All right, move on, new writing, items. We had some policies that we read for the first time a couple of weeks ago. 7240, 7240P, 7305, 7500, and 7710. Go back through those if you can, not right now, but was there any questions? Or adopt, or moving to adoption. We will always have the opportunity to, but I, look at those again.
I'm, that we adopt policy, 7240, 7240P, 7305, 7500, and 7710.
Motion has been made in second to adopt five policies. All those in favor? All right, next on our agenda is consideration of our architect. Heard the interviews that we had last week involving score sheets, score notes. Are there any questions or comments? Suppose we can talk about who our number one architects are, which one of us? Discussion from there. Okay, I'll just go ahead and start as I schedule, as I went through the architectural scoring. My, my top pick would be ED Studios. Like you have a second part, but I will propose, if you have a second, I don't have a second.
My top score was also ED Studios.
Very good.
ED Studios was my top as well.
Is there a reason, Adam, you would like to have a discussion that changes that some more? Just, just because we're the board and you guys are going to have to work with them. Do you have a recommendation of Mr. Kirby?
Hey, you know, I read, I read a few, a panel of teachers and this is the presentation, Dr. Free people, someone that's been in this district in the past, in my considerations. And I, I switched during the presentation because I thought ED Studios was a blessing. And I think they're on the ball and I think they'd be, they'd be, definitely.
If everybody's in agreement with the apps, if we have more discussion, maybe I would entertain a motion. I'll make a motion that we appoint ED Studios as our architect for the RFQ.
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made in second to appoint ED Studios as our architect for the RFQ. Has been made in second, all those in favor? Yes, Drew, thank you, I have these to keep. Mr. Kirby, would you give us a little more information pertaining to the Indian Head State's evacuation plan that we are considering?
Yes, so Indian Head State contacted us recently, just asking that they could use the high school facility to evacuate if they have a emergency. So it's right by the high school. She said they have 22 residents, half of them are wheelchair staff. They said they're moving very fast, but they would like to utilize the high school. So most likely in the auxiliary gym, they're supposed to be there. Okay, just fire, they got to fire. They can go somewhere immediately and probably figure out, you know, hotel somewhere or in families or however, but this would just be a very quick emergency evacuation plan. So, this with Drew and he says, yeah, we can make that work. This was signed a number of years ago. Darrell Hendrick was the board chairman when this was signed off, a little over a year. Was a, actual principal, I believe, 1999, it's when it was signed. Okay, so just, they just want to update it so everybody knows. And once you sign it, if you guys agree to this, Drew will then meet with the manager up there and just give a brief tour and another discussion. So a couple of questions, Drew's on board.
So this isn't new, it's just updating and getting the current situation versus past.
This is, it's a little difficult since.
Okay. You can read this.
I'll take a motion that we accept the, over in front of the Indian Head State's as an emergency evacuation plan.
Okay, motion has been made in second. To accept the evacuation plan. All those in favor? All right, after our change, we will go into executive session at this time. And I think that we can just go in the conference room right here and then everybody can stay here instead of, it's easier for a few than many. So we will, we need a motion in here.
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session for item code 74-206B for personnel and item code 74-206B for street. I'll take our, John.
I.
Yes, John.
Yes. Yes. So, so action, so the next action on our, on our calendar, our agenda is to consider an ISBA MOU for superintendent search. We would just have a discussion, I would entertain a motion for that item, which can be tabled.
I approve that we table the MOU for superintendent search.
So I got a, okay, motion's been made in second to table this, the superintendent search through the ISBA. All those in favor?
I.
All right. Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna move on. We have had a discussion with Mr. Neff, Neff's in the office. Thank you, I almost butchered that.
It's okay.
About considering an easement proposal. Like, it looks like they're going to give us just a little more information than we had last time, give us, and discuss this a little more.
Dan, go ahead. I think I'm going to start out first. I've already showed the, the audience the maps here. Turn there. I like really heavy easels. Earlier you saw this map of the, of our ID for Pumpkin Patch and actually raised land that runs north and south. And here is, this section here, we're talking about the parking being, is represented right, right here. Here's the high school. This road comes up here, this is Paddock Avenue, kind of past the museums and the community church. And then here's your grass field. Now, our Pumpkin Patch is, is going to be up here and we would like to have our parking right here and entrance it off of Paddock Avenue, but right now, Paddock Avenue stops, stops about right here. Right here is your new fence inside of that road. Can you, can you see it there, Beth? But what we'd like, for you guys to do is to allow us an easement or talk to the city or whoever and get this road to extend to, to raise property, this, I don't know, 50 feet. Right now, right now, nothing's here. I think there's a drainage, drainage ditch here and a, a neighbor that lives right up here kind of comes on here and accesses his place across here. But if the road came this way, then we could get into the parking for a Pumpkin Patch and the, the Phil Fest, people could come in and park here also. We'll talk to them about whether they want the area for their, for their campers right out here. But, but if you would allow this road to extend to raise property, then, then we would allow you to use the parking for, for events here on your ballroom. Or if, if the Phil Fest people needed access there, it'd be up to you if you want to let them through here to, to come to the concerts. Does the map make sense to everyone? Your, your teacher would kind of give you a sharp, so I can make it, make it a fair way to see.
So what, what is your plans with, and you say a Pumpkin Patch, is a Pumpkin Patch all that you're wanting to do there? What is your plan? Why do you need an easement?
Yes, for a Pumpkin Patch. We'll, we'll do it in the fall. We also want to do it in the spring. If it's popular, we may do it sometimes during the summer, but, but, you know, these kind of hands-on kid type attractions don't attract people when it's 100 degrees. So in the middle of summer, I don't think we would be able to operate even if we wanted to. But in this area here, which is, which is right up, right up in here, part of it would be farm land, we'd be forming corn for corn maze, growing pumpkins to harvest in the fall. We'd have all kinds of kids, hands-on type of attractions. You know, we don't, we don't intend to have any mechanized attractions. We're not going to be a carnival, but we'll have things like sand piles, climbing walls, slides made out of culverts. I think they call them gerbil, gerbil runs, and one of the gals was talking about that having an eight-foot culvert pipe that's about six feet long with kids who can get in it and, and run and roll this thing up and down the course. Climbing dunes, we're, we're going to get a, a small silo and take the walls off the bottom of it and fill it with, with dried corn kernels so kids can get in there with play trucks and, and play in the corn. We'll have a petting zoo as well as pig races. In the middle of our pig racing court, I'm going to put on my Wild West show, which involves trick horses. Ray's got a bunch of horses too. We'll have horses out here for display and for, for kids to stand on the other side of the fence from the horse with the horses to come up and then take pictures and that, that kind of thing. The petting zoo would be mostly, you know, we'll have sheep and goats. You know, the typical, typical stuff that are in petting zoos. But kids love that kind of stuff and, and those kind of animals are very kid friendly. We'll have some kid friendly zip lines. I, I like the idea of the zip lines, but they're not going to be 30 feet in the air, they'll be close to the ground and shorter distance so little, their kids are safe on them. Have a bubble, a bubble station where the kids can dip large, large string apparatus and make those gigantic bubbles and run around. One of our things will be a rope making machine. I've got machines, I, this, most of this stuff, the same things I've seen at fairs, that's my, that's my business. I have a Rhinestone Roper Show. In the, in the warmer months, I travel, travel the country really, either doing, doing the show at fairs or doing school assemblies. But we set up our rope making machine after every show and the kids, the kids pick their favorite color of the twine and we string, string the twine for, string the twine for them. Then they crank the machine and, and we guide them in making a lariat. They walk away with a, with a cowboy lariat. We have rope and steers out there for them, dummy steers out there for the rope, get less, not roping. So it'll all be, it won't be mechanized carnival stuff, it'll all be hands-on climbing walls, playing in the corn, that kind, that kind of thing is what we're going to do.
Where is the current access to this property?
You know, the current access and Ray, Ray directed from Rockland, he has an easement from the school to come in this way.
For farm equipment.
For farm equipment.
That's the only access?
No, Gailey is a, is a natural entrance.
Where's, what's?
Gailey.
Oh, okay.
And so is Ninth Street.
Okay.
Yeah, right, you go through, just turn right on Ninth, like if you're going off of Indian Head, up or Indian Head, and there's a easement that goes through two fields and goes all the way to where we are talking about.
Yes, it's, he's got our other access that'd be all the way down here or up here. But this is, this is the ideal because it's easiest, that's an easy way to direct people how to get in there. And if, if we didn't have a whole bunch of people parking out here like you do now, then this would be a open way to get in. There wouldn't be any cars parking out here. All the cars would be parked in here for the school events and for, for Pumpkin Patch.
So. So, I have a, Drew, how's our parking, is that, you're saying we have a need for additional parking, does that help, stop for complex or some guys or whatever?
Well, I think right now, we're going to put in a bunch of work there and double that off and put the, the new fence up. We're going to have a lot of parking along that area, all the way to that back corner.
Fiddle Festival, you mentioned it might benefit them in some fashion. What, what, you mentioned parking, are you going to do, or are you going to, going to be a mud pit this spring or they came in there, what's that going to look like?
We're going to plant, we get grass growing, so it wouldn't be a, you know, if there's enough rain to be a mud pit, I don't know if, you know, Ray's not prepared to, to gravel the whole thing, but, but it should, we'll plant grass, it shouldn't be as good as them parking on, parking on your field here. Weren't they parking on you guys' properties for quite a while?
Yeah, they haven't established that.
Yes. Yeah, well, and it may be different than first, different first year than it is the second or third year.
Do you guys, what's your, what's your commitment to this project? Is this, is this property for sale or not for sale?
It's raised property and it's, it's not for sale.
I did, I did have it for sale because I had a potential buyer and he never came through, so. I did, I did have it for sale, because I had a potential buyer, and he never came through, so I, I removed it. And, so it's not for sale.
You're asking for easement, it would just be, no limits on what could go through at any time, so it could be, subdivision, it could be the coral, or brighter things down the trail, if you had that easement, is that correct?
It would just be an alternative easement, and for public use. So, being that the Fiddle Fest has a problem, and if we come to an agreement, it would be a win-win for them to be able to use that entrance.
Have you, have you, have they kinda committed, say, this is a great idea?
Well, the last, the last time, he was on board, but I did have a conversation, and he just said that he needs to look at other options as well, just in case this doesn't go through. So, so I'm not sure if he's thinking it may not work, I, I don't know.
Easy access to come into the high school, it's a major way, I feel in my mind, but it's, it may be an option.
I can tell you that if you guys are short on parking, that, that would be the ideal entrance. If the Fiddle Fest is, is considering parking other than your guys' parking, that would be the closest to the, to the institute and to the heights and to the, I guess the auditorium is that, is what they use. So it would be right there, within walking distance. Drew at one point mentioned that down by the silos, which is down by where Maloney's live, but that's, that's a far walk. That's, that would be the opposite end of the field.
I guess I'm having a hard time understanding what the benefit of the, we're talking about Fiddle Festival and Pumpkin Patches. And it has, if it has legal access, why do we need to give an easement?
The benefit to you is, is you'll have parking right next to your ball fields.
But if we don't need that, Drew said, he didn't think we needed it.
I, I don't think he said that, he said there's a lot of parking. Did you mean there's a lot of parking, or you mean there's a lot of cars trying to park?
No, where we have that new fence, there's a lot of parking along the fence.
Oh, alright.
But it's not gravel, yes, it, that's what he's saying.
Okay.
That's a parking, for the apartment, but it's not, it's a decision to take that one?
I, I think that we've had two good meetings so far, and, and to consider this. I think, I think there needs to be some more consideration, because last time we, we talked, it didn't sound like, it, it sounded like we were gonna be asked to foot some of the bill, putting some of the gravel and some, some of that parking, and building that into what would be a good foundation parking spot. And, and I don't think, from my perspective, that we're in the, we're ready to do that and to, to invest that much more money. So I think it's gonna take more, more discussion, more time, and, and a, a plan as to how that would really work for us, so.
Well, it feels like if it's, I thought the whole, the first intentions were to try to figure out what to do with, or help out Fiddle Fest a little. So it feels like they should be included in some of this as well, if that's.
And we, just to clarify, I didn't bring up anything regarding seeking money into an asphalt parking lot. You guys brought it up, and I just said, if you guys would like to see that, we can probably come together and, and come up with a plan, is what I said. But didn't really need to, if it not intended to.
Most likely for, for your purposes, you know, you don't need this whole area for your parking. You know, we, we're holding, we'll need this whole area for the Pumpkin Patch. But really, all, all you guys probably need is, is a strip here where two or three cars can park. If, if, if people are already parking out here, there's not that much room out here to park, there's just, but this, this would be more room than that is, but you're not talking about this whole area. So if we're talking about graveling something for, for your purposes, we're talking about a strip here is all you guys are concerned with. You don't, you're not gonna worry about all this, probably.
And, and you're right, but we have, we do have a parent plan for our parking lot and sidewalk going back into that right, right along there. So walking distance is about the same. So what I'm saying is, I think it's gonna, I'm personally not ready to make a decision on this today. I don't think that we've had the discussion and really have a good plan as yet. But I'm, I'm only one of a group here, so I still have questions, and I'm not sure that I'm ready to ask all the questions that I'm formally in mind, but right now, I don't, I'm not seeing the vision that would help our school district the way we'd like it to, and I'm, and I know that, you know, in my mind, we're not in a condition to go out. Have you met with the city owner this far?
We, we've talked to him, we haven't met with him officially, no. Port bodies, yeah.
We actually did go see Dave Luze.
That's right.
We did go see Dave Luze. Him, Dan and I, Dave Luze is the, the, I think the city inspector. And so we did sit down, that was Dave Luze, the city guy, and he thought it was a wonderful idea.
I, I just wondered if you, if you think there's a drawback for giving access, this fifty feet here?
Drawback is, is giving public open access, permanent, permanent open access. If, if, if that's not what we're intending to use. And again, there's, there's more, I'm, I'm not the expert, so there's more questions that I need to, I need some more supporting documentation on people that's doing, other than pros and cons. I'm, I'm hearing what you would like, and I appreciate this. I would like to make sure before, before I am part of the decision that I know the pros and cons, the legalities, and why I don't do it.
Question, you could still do all of this stuff that you're wanting to do, coming in from a different road? Because you already have easement from a different road, correct? Is that right?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, so, but you were just wanting us involved, because we could access the parking?
And, and the Fiddle Fest.
Okay.
We thought it were good for you guys and the Fiddle Fest, and this is a, it's just a convenient way to give directions for people to get in. If they go the other way, there's a few more jigs we gotta take. But they, but we could.
Difference is maybe three hundred feet, walking distance, versus what, half, half mile?
Yeah, your plans seem like they're, they're kind of evolving or changing slightly as you're going, I don't know. It seems like, we could put that into place for a year, two, three, and see it's moving, things going great. Got that established for the Fiddle Festival and the parking lot. So, okay, this is really rolling, and this would actually benefit us and, and you. I would say, my money, we're gonna bring it back, and, and, so just, just take that. I think we're just hesitant, knowing your commitment, your experience with this, putting together, by the school, those are sort of like, it's like, you know, obviously, pro-business and what, let's see, something like this go, but I, right now, it's, it's not, it's, I don't think it's gonna benefit the district in any way.
What if there were a five-year commitment? Instead of permanent?
Can you, can you go in and put easement gas in the parking lot for the Fiddle Festival and for the parking? Do your Pumpkin Patch and Corn Maze and a number of these things, get it going, it's going well, and you see that, man, this thing looks great, and it's really exciting, and to me, I'd have you come back and explain that, but I'm, I'm not there, like, to explain it. I'm somebody, I'm not gonna vote, you know, so. No, I don't vote, the board, the board votes.
Well, if you don't vote, quit talking.
Well, I, I agree, I, I agree with what you're saying. Because it seems to me like you could still do the Pumpkin Patch and everything you're wanting to do without the easement. People just have to come in a different way.
You have to come in a different way.
And then if, if we decide it would benefit us, then we could get the easement, right there?
That's true. The, the only reason we're talking to you is because, you know, typically you put these things next to Salt Lake City, or you put in Napa, that's next to Boise. You know, Weezer's kinda, we're kinda out here already, we just wanted maybe just as convenient as we could to get into it. Any, anything that is not as, anything that's not convenient, you start dropping people, they don't wanna mess with it. That's why we're here, because this is the most convenient way in. Yep, it would make a difference if we're in Napa or Caldwell.
Yeah, for the sake of the Fiddle Fest people, by going around, it, it's, it would have to detour the whole, the entire traffic and go through the entire property to land back in the exact same spot that is designated, that we would like to designate for the Fiddle Fest. And that's, so that right there would make it kind of an inconvenience, knowing that we, they could just go straight through and they're right there. So, for the sake of the Fiddle Fest.
So I, I just, I just am gonna just point out, and, and I appreciate what you're doing and, and you're, you're thinking of the Fiddle Fest. We are not the Fiddle Fest.
Exactly.
If you take this back to the Fiddle Fest and they come to us and say, hey, this looks like it'll work, the consideration changes a little bit for us, because we want the Fiddle Fest here, but that's not us.
Yeah.
So if they have a commitment to you, and they, that's where they wanna be, that might change the discussion a little bit, because they're already using our facility and we, I don't know if partnership is the right word, but we, we, we wanna be able to help the Fiddle Festival, because it helps our community. But right now, I'm, I'm not gonna indulge, but I'm, I'm hearing a few different things from them that I'm hearing from you, of, of what they would like and where they would like to be. So, I'm not ready to make this commitment as a school district, but I'm willing to have the discussion with the Fiddle Festival and you to say, is this where you wanna be? Is, is this what's gonna benefit that festival?
Yeah.
But for me to try to make that decision and say, we're gonna do this for them, I don't know where they wanna be right now.
Okay. And I, and I'm not sure, but I, I think that, did it, yeah, the Fiddle Fest already kinda talked to you there, Ms. Dickerson? Regarding the property?
Gary came in after the meeting that, that you were present at, he came in the next day, because he wasn't feeling well the day you came in.
Sure.
He had, he has, I hope he's talked to you since then, because there was maybe some other thoughts.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, he told us not to get our hopes up, here, he said he talked to you, he said, don't get your hopes up, so. We don't know what he was talking about, but I guess we're not surprised.
I think we're just cautious. Yeah, yeah, I, like, I think this sounds fun and like a great idea, and it's always great to have things for the kids to do, but for us to like make a decision right now, I don't, I don't think we're, I don't, yeah. Maybe the Fiddle Festival is, or is the place to start, and then, and then come back to us.
Well, I would, as, as a, as a chairman of the board, I would, I would make a suggestion that we table this, that we, this is not a no, but that we, that we would table this and get more involved, and keep having this, this, this open communication. Because that's what I want it to be, is open communication. But I'm not feeling like we're ready to say yay or nay. But by tabling it, gives us opportunity to continue the conversation and continue to decide what is best for us, the Fiddle Festival and the community. But, but, you know, for us specifically, as our partner.
Make a motion that we table the proposed easement.
Before I move on, I just want to thank for your time.
Yeah.
And I, I look forward to having more discussion. This is not, this is, in no means are we shutting this completely down, I think it's gonna take more.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So we've, we've had a motion and a second to table this for now, all those in favor? Might need a little more explanation. Consider a calendar change for secondary schools to move parent-teacher conferences from February twenty-fifth through February, at, from February twenty-fifth to twenty-sixth, could you give us just a little more?
Yeah, well, I think the secondary schools, it's gonna be, it's gonna be, but I think you're gonna probably wanna go ahead with Drew, for sure, and.
Yeah, just for, at the high school, what's happening is, we're having our parent-teacher conferences at the end of our quarter, and so a lot of our kids don't have an opportunity to, to improve those grades before the quarter is final. And what happens is, our seniors, if they get to that third quarter and they are failing, that they have to get a very good grade to try to balance that out. So what we'd like to do is have parent-teacher conferences a little bit earlier, so those kids have about two to three weeks to try to get their grades up before that's locked in as their quarter grade. And I would imagine, moving forward, we'd actually like to move that up even a, a week further, so it's right in the middle of our, of our quarter in the future. But for this year, the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, which would be Tuesday and Wednesday evenings, five to eight, we would do our parent-teacher conferences those days and at those times. And just remember, kind of what we've, the reason we've gone to that is just because of our numbers of parents that come to our, parent-teacher conferences has dropped a lot, just because of the access, you know, through our computer database, so that they check their grades a lot more than they used to, and so that's kind of the thought of that. And then our normal days are the normal week before spring break, we would just work with students that entire week, just not have it any weeks.
So the reason for not just moving it completely right now is because it's, it's new, it's happening quick, but maybe planning next year to even go a week quicker is what I'm hearing?
Yeah, yeah, so I would have liked to have had them this week, if I could have. But we're not.
Visit with you guys first, and also give our parents an opportunity to see that change.
Okay. Questions?
And then the middle school, we talked about joining them with that as well. Our conflict is, is the twenty-fifth, we have a game. And I think that's part of the challenge, calendaring with sports going on. So we'll probably just stick with the way it is this year, and then we would want to move on.
But if you're going to change your schedule next year, we'll teach you.
Which, possibly, yeah.
The one thing that's, that's happening is, just like our first quarter, our first quarter, parent-teacher conferences, that was the week of football, of playing football games, and it's been state in the past. And we have so many of our, our coaches, our teachers that are coaches, and just, that just support our athletes, and they wanna go to those events. So if we move that up a little bit, it's also gonna help alleviate some of those, you know, those absences for those, those individuals as well.
So we're considering this calendar change just for the high school this year, is that what we're?
Okay. Potentially come back to table. In a screening for a future discussion.
I'd make a motion to be accept the calendar change, as we've got a high school with the parent-teacher conferences to February twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, motion's been made, accepted to allow high school to change their dates of parent-teacher conferences. Been made and accepted, all those in favor? Okay, great. All right, I think that gets us to the end of our passion items. I don't have any discussion items on our agenda this time. Any, oh, sorry, I'm getting out of myself. Is there any future agenda discussion items we'd like to put? Is there any future agenda discussion items we would like to put? With more, we've just tabled a proposal for the easement of the bar as, because we need more than just the, we're going to put that back on the agenda for a little discussion, try to get more input or do we want to just, I suppose we can just have the superintendent go.
I like the information. I like the way you go. We have a lot of ideas. Yeah, I would allow them to be the ones who are pushing that. If they want to come back to us and say, "Can we have a discussion about it by this point?" We need to make sure it's squarely on their shoulders to make sure that that conversation with Fiddle is not something we need to put our superintendent on. That's their deal right now. So let them do the legwork, so to speak, to go out to the Fiddle Fest, to go back to the state and make sure that we got all the thumbs in the room to go back to it. I appreciate that. Okay, thank you.
If Fiddle Fest is coming to us as a basis to do that, it'd be a different, different way.
The other side of the desk. Well, we have some communication, some information that, first part of the communication and information on our agenda is the Weezer School District. We have written a resolution opposing the school vouchers that we would like to or have sent out to.
I just gave them to you so you could hand them out on day only.
Okay, no, that's awesome.
I can give you more if you'd like. Get around and give this to me.
It goes through, I don't know, we can hand them out and give one to our media, but it just goes through and explains our opinion of the school voucher system and how that will hurt us as a public school with tax dollars being split out to other people.
To parents, yes.
Yeah, to the private schools. And that takes away the public dollars that is needed in the public school system. So we have written a resolution and each of our names are on it that we will be able to hand out. So if anybody would like one of those, would love to give you a copy. Another thing that we have is next Monday, Tuesday is day only. And I believe all of us are signed up for that. So we'll be with our state representatives and we'll have the opportunity to really hash this over and.
They already voted on that.
They'll still get to hear what our opinions are and maybe that can change something. What's the correct word?
At least I don't know what it is.
With that, I'd have gotten to the end of our agenda.
And move that we adjourned the meeting on second.
Motion has been made in second. To adjourn.
Everybody, go ahead.